All right, so it's six o'clock. We're going to start our June School Board meeting. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Amen. All right, Mr. Martin, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Well, first of all, we have a new board member, Mr. Heckman. We're welcoming him back. He is on one, I believe. Your term runs through 2028, so.
Sounds like a long time.
Long time when you say 2028. Yeah, thank you. I look forward to continuing to serve the district for five more or something.
Absolutely. First up, we have our consent agenda. Are there any questions on it? Okay. With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that the consent agenda, financial report, and board minutes of the regular board meeting held on May 9, 2023, and the special board meeting held on May 25, 2023, be approved as submitted.
All right, so we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by John. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right.
Up next is what all boards love the most, and that is reconfiguration of school board officers. And we always start with the president. So Ms. Conklin, this is actually something that I've heard back over the years.
All right. So we are going to elect president. We're going to go through each one of these individually, if y'all are okay with that. So do we have any recommendations for president?
I recommend Mindy for president.
Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay. So we have a recommendation. Ryan, did you have anything?
Ryan, I don't have anything.
Okay. Just making sure. You were the only one who didn't say anything, so hit me on the spot there. All right, so we have a recommendation of Mindy. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by John. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Up next, you have Vice President.
So Vice President. Currently, it is John. So do we have a different recommendation or motion? I would recommend Sarah. Sarah has been to the meeting. Sarah has, Sarah's one of the newer ones, but she's served all year. So I would make a recommendation of Sarah. John? Ryan?
Yeah, I don't, I have discussion. I'm fine with Sarah being a, so my previous term, like, the offices rotated every year as people got experience. It sounds like now we're doing it a little differently.
Yeah, yes, sir.
It got changed.
What we have right now is plus one point one two. No, one point two, sorry. One point two, plus one point two is the election of officers. This is every year that Vice President, I'm sorry, President, Vice President, Secretary dispersing. And I need legislative liaisons there. They're redone every year.
Every year.
And it's not a, what's a roll, is it called a roll-up? Would that be like the Vice President rolls up to?
Yeah. I appreciate the education. So I'm fine with Sarah doing Vice President.
And John?
I'm good.
So we have, I'll make a recommendation of Sarah. So do we have a motion?
I'll move that.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So it was Ryan, Mindy. All four of us voted.
Okay. Ryan made the motion?
Yep. Mindy's second.
Okay.
And then Board Secretary, that was Sarah. I recommend John for Board Secretary. Again, John's been here forever. He knows all of the, I don't even know how many years he's done it.
I would make that motion.
Think he's been here forever?
Uh, for Board Secretary.
So you make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Ryan, Sarah, all in favor? Any opposed?
Okay. Dispersing officer, that is someone who comes in and they sign off on checks, warrants, electronic trend, well, EFTs, electronic fund transfers. Is there anything else?
I think.
Okay, so it's currently Jessica. Jessica's not here.
Right. And I need someone who can come in during business days. It's not a lot, but you know, once or twice a month to come in and sign off on those things.
Ryan, you available? I don't know what your work schedule looks like.
Yeah, and I don't know anything about Jessica. I am available at times, but there are times I'm traveling.
Okay. If y'all want to do that, I would like to, that y'all also recommend, no, a dispersing officer, but a secondary one as well, so that if Mr. Heckman is out of town or on business or unavailable, that we can still, still.
Okay.
You go to the primary?
You go with the primary?
Primary is what I was looking for.
Okay. So I would recommend that we do Ryan for the primary, and then I can do secondary if we need to. Or John can do secondary. The CPA.
I don't even sign stuff in my office.
I don't mind doing second. I know I work from home Mondays and Fridays.
Okay.
So I don't mind being, I just know that with my, my schedule, I can't do it every time. But if you're traveling.
Yes.
Could Jessica do secondary?
So I recommend Ryan for primary. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Sarah. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Sarah, me.
Any opposed? All four of us voted yes.
Okay. And so a secondary?
And then I'll recommend myself for secondary. Okay. A motion? Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by John. Any opposition? All in favor? Any opposed? Nope. Okay. So then Mindy's secondary.
Legislative liaison, that is someone who I send to the, to the, to DSC and they give you all the updates on legislative updates. I don't see that being a big deal this year because there's, it's, you know, next year's an odd number of year. The session won't be as intense as, as this year. So it starts in kind of January, February, when they go into session and goes through March. But to be full transparency, I get the emails as well. I send them out to everyone. We just have to have someone on the list to do that.
Okay. So Adam used to be the liaison. So Ryan, you good with that one?
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
It's an email. You forward it out to everybody.
Okay.
That's all.
I don't.
And most of the time Keith sends it before we would ever get it from anybody else anyway.
Yes, sir.
No, I'm just, I want to make, we all don't need to have a role. Like, we have someone not here, and I didn't know if she needed to have a role. I don't mind to do whatever. I'll take my two roles.
It, it's, it's fine however, however it goes. One person can handle each can. You can't be one of the three officers. You can't be two of the three officers.
You're not going to send me to Little Rock every week, are you?
No, sir.
Okay.
I wouldn't do that to you.
Or if you wanted to recommend Jessica, you could.
You can recommend Jessica. I'm just throwing out people.
Well, she's not here to speak for herself, so I'll go ahead and suggest that I do it. You guys can move that or whatever.
Okay. So we have a recommendation of Ryan. Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mindy, second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay. Up next, excuse me. Up next under Section 12, we have Action Adams. We have school board meeting dates. Have you heard during the January meeting? Reset, reset our meeting dates. We all, in the past, we have always done the second Monday of the month, and that's continuing. We ask if that's something y'all would rather not do. We can adjust those dates. I did put 13 dates on here instead of 12. I would also like to go ahead and schedule one for July 31, 2023, next month, just to be personnel only because we're continuing to hire the seats. Our new teacher in-service is August 3 and 4, and that will give us opportunity to have another power session before we have a new teacher or new faculty in service.
I think, I was looking for those dates. Do you have those quickly available that you can throw up there? I'm scrolling through the packet.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
Here, right here?
Okay.
Give me a second, ma'am.
So my only concern is because of school choice being, having, the deadline was May 1st. We approve those in June.
Correct.
However, because school ends in May and then sports, and I know I'm thinking of sports right now at this moment, but I'm trying to think of what's best for the student.
I don't mind.
Can we, can we do something?
I was, I was looking at that as well. I don't mind having a special school board meeting toward the end of May.
Okay.
To do that, I, I need more time to go through numbers than it ends on May.
First and go through the 13th.
And then we have to wait for, if people, like traditional mail, you know, it's postal service mail in. I have to wait, you know, for postmark dates and all that. So I didn't receive some until the 5th or the 6th, but they were postmarked, you know, before the 1st. It just takes a while.
So do we want to do a special? Or do we want to move the May one back?
How about we do this, we're May 13th. If I need to do a special ones, we can.
Okay.
We can keep it on the 13th.
Okay.
And, but if I'm not, the thing I always wait for is kindergarten numbers, to be honest with you.
I get it.
And I'll give as long as possible.
I get it.
So I would rather either include it on the 13th or call it special if we need to later on in May. And this may be called a special, you know, for hiring purposes as well. So I think we can probably do that.
Work it in somewhere. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Clarify one more time. You said August 14th. That's the first day of school?
It is.
I don't like that.
So it's just going to be one of those days, right?
Do, do we want to do that on the 14th? Or do we want to?
Yeah, is that your, y'all's preference is to have that?
It's your call.
Well, the week before, I'm doing in-service with faculty and staff.
No, yeah.
So the week out, why don't you wait a week and?
We can do that.
It's your call, though. What do you think?
We should, if we do the 31st of July, it gives us the hiring period. It's just if I have someone in between then to hire, I would like to do it as soon as possible.
Okay. It's fine. We're good if you're good.
I would like to keep it with the 14th.
Okay.
And we'll, my staff will be ready.
All right.
All right. I just wanted to make sure, because I was going to ask the same question on the 14th. It's going to be busy.
I'm good.
Now, we could do a Tuesday if you wanted to or something like that. And is that a little different?
It's up to you. I'm fine with a Tuesday.
I think I need a day.
Let's just leave it. Let's just leave it. I'm good.
Okay. All right. So we have those dates. Any further discussion? Is that your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that we approve the school board meeting dates for the 23, 24 school year as presented.
All right, so we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by John. Do we have a second?
They all second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Okay. Next is policy changes to the, our policy changes for the 23, 24 school year. In the later year, we go through this. This was a lot more than normal year with legislative session, with the Learns Act, with all the additional acts that were in there. Everything that has been put before you is a requirement of an act or under the guidance of Arkansas School Board Association. So we haven't gone out on our own and created a policy or anything like that without vetting it and cross-referenced with Arkansas Code Intended or law. Any questions?
Is this like the first reading?
No, sir. We did first readings and.
March.
March.
Okay. This is the final.
Yes, sir.
You're good.
I apologize if I didn't get it.
No, no, no. You're, you're fine. I'm just making sure where we're at in the process.
Any questions? Okay. With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that we approve the policy as presented.
So we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? One, one other question. So I know we had talked about the sports. I know that's not part of the ASBA.
Well, it's not part of policy. It's a practice that we use in handbooks.
Okay. And we're going to look at that in.
We're going to, other is, we're going to approve handbooks for release in July.
Okay. All right.
That gives us some time to look at that and embed that as well.
Perfect. Okay. So all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Next up is our MOU with Rott Therapy Services. We, we contract, outsource to them for OTC services. This is for now, I don't believe the rates change that way.
How many do they want us? Maybe $2?
Okay.
$2 per hour for therapy.
You know, we use them, use Rott to help us with services that we cannot provide with staff, our current staff and everything. You know, the rates are fair. They're very competitive and everything. And they've, they've done a good job for us.
Is this part of the ones that we can source out with insurance, too? Are these part of the services that?
Oh, yes, ma'am. You mean our Medicaid building?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. We go for their services.
Okay.
And we've, they've done good services. I don't know much about that side of it. They have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right.
With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that we approve the MOU with Sirot Therapy Services for the 23, 24 school year.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have, or a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Sarah. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
All right. Out of state travel. Next up is out of state travel. We have two students who have qualified to go to SCC LA National Championship Leadership, the National Leadership Conference in Denver, Colorado. It's always during the odd time of the 4th of July weekend. They do that every, every year. I don't know why. But we have two students, and we have Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Ivy, our, our food and consumer science teachers. They'll be attending as well, Chacrani. And so it's a one-to-one ratio. That's as low as you can get. You know, it's, I think, one, one of our students, Ms. Conkler, is competing in sports nutrition. And I cannot remember what Ms. Slitchfield is competing in. But it's a wonderful event for them, and it's something they're passionate about.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Just how did they have to compete? How did they earn this right?
They do it through the state level.
Oh, okay.
Through the state level, we qualify for the national.
Awesome. Well, congratulations to those ladies. All right, so your recommendation?
With that, I'd like to make the recommendation for the out-of-state travel for July 1, 2023, through July 7, 2023, as presented.
All right, so we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
All right. Motion by Sarah. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Up next, we have school choice applications. I know we talked about this a little bit, and I apologize for the delay, but we want to make sure that we can meet the needs of our community and everything. At the back of this, you have, there's a little, there's a pin mark on there as well. I noticed there. We have a couple of 86 applications this year. You know, but when you look at my kindergarten, where our vast majority of our, our kids are coming in at, right now, we have a little over, I think, 100, a little over 100, 100 and 105 that are good role. We can have, we can house 180 kindergarten right now. So we have plenty of room. And when you look at the other, the net gain and loss through there, we consider the students who are currently with us. You know, they may, their parents may have purchased up home outside of the district during the school year. We did an agreement with Rogers or Bentonville or whatever for them to stay for the remainder of the year. They're already here. You take the students that are currently in here, the students that are transferring out, and the impact's actually minimal for us this year for grade level. I think the most outside of kindergarten is first grade to sixth and sixth grade to sixth. And we can, we can handle the growth. We can handle the students and have capacity at all grade levels. Yes, sir.
So the net plot, the net differential is 53.
It's 50, it's, I think it's 54. We had one student who pulled her name out. Yes, sir.
So we have space.
Yes, sir. Now, we have physical space and we have teacher load space as well.
Can you expla, I know sometimes I hear parents ask just for information's sake, when does the school choice kind of cap out? Just so we all kind of.
Well, school choice, there's two ways it caps out. Students moving out. A district is already required to allow 3% of their student population to transfer out. When you look at our transfer out numbers, it's.
Very small.
It, yes, sir. It's very small. Transferring in, you have to look at capacity, and that's whether you can handle it through square footage laws, you know, classroom space and with your teacher ratios. You know, part of it is if you have to hire an additional teacher, you know, you have, so you have an empty classroom, you could, you could deny as well. There's also a change in, through rules and regs in the legislative session that board-to-board transfers have to be considered each month now instead of just July and December. So I would anticipate that we will have board-to-board transfer requests every month along with school choice that is made one day a month.
Okay.
We can't look ahead and anticipate growth and say, well, we can't accept you guys because we're going to get big.
Right.
We have to take, we have to take what we can take now.
Right.
Yes. And it is, it, it's, you know, we are growing, and we'll see where we.
Well, well, yeah. I think my question was just to give, like, community members comfort in knowing that people who live in P Ridge will always have space for them. We're not going to ever at any point not have space for the kids living here.
Guarantee your, your enrollment.
It's a litter.
So live inside P Ridge School District boundaries. I think you are guaranteed 100%. That's any public school.
Right.
But I think you will start seeing more, more guidance from DSC and all schools once in the future works through the rules and regs and things.
Right.
So we'll, I would anticipate it opening, to be honest with you, opening up more.
Okay. And wasn't there also another change with school choice as far as sports?
There.
That happens July 1st?
I don't, Mr. Ragge, do you want to talk about that? I don't.
There have been some, some updates with the rules and policies. Triple A votes when they're done in August, so.
So it's not finalized yet?
They get, they get the policy.
Okay.
And then they've got about a month and a half to formulate their plan, write their rules, and then it gets voted on. Then watch out the general session. It's, I think it's like August 1st or July 20th. It's around 30, July 1st to August.
Okay.
Then it'll come in the.
So that won't come into play till August?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a delighted reaction. You know, you have legislative session that they pass back to moms and bills and all that good stuff. Then DSC has to do rules and regs and all that and pass it down to us. So it's a delighted process.
Okay.
And how that works.
Perfect. All right, so any discussion on the school choice applications? All right, Mr. Martin? All right, Mr. Martin?
With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that we accept school choice applications for the 23, 24 school year as presented.
All right. So we have the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by John. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
Second by Sarah?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Up next is our MOU with North West Arkansas Community College. This is the same MOU that we've had for years to sell our kids to have concurrent, are able to have concurrent opportunity to take the current classes and enroll at NY while they're also a student here. They require a MOU every year and we always approve it.
Are their fees changing?
I think the only thing that is changing is, it was in there, it was highlighted. It's a math lab fee. Where is it? It's that? There it is. There's a mild, my math lab that's $82.11 in 2023. And I'll be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure what that is.
Okay.
So they have that fee that's, that's covered as well.
So 82 and some change and on top of the.
Tuition piece.
Tuition piece.
$30, you know, it's, it's the price that a child can do go through us and do convert a baby to suck, or as a family go out on their own. It's, it's, it's a huge advantage to them. It is.
Absolutely. My kid did it and she's already.
Yes, ma'am.
A whole semester ahead. So, and then Sydney, she did it and she has an associate's degree already.
Oh, that's crazy.
Crazy. Okay. All right. And we're just going to make sure that the parents understand the fees.
Okay, ma'am. They go through that, sign off on it and all that good stuff.
Perfect. All right.
With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that we, that we approve the MOU with North West Arkansas Community College for the 23, 24 school year.
All right. So we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Last in section, well, I've got these misnumbered. Last in section five is a request for additional special education staff beginning with the 23, 24 school year. What we have right now is we have Ms. Couch, yes, Ms. Marlowe, it's Ms. Couch. She's, Ms. Marlowe. Ms. Couch, she's a .5 school psychologist specialist for us and a .5 special education teacher for us. What we're needing now with our growth and everything is we need a one FTE school psychologist and a one FTE special education teacher. So what this is, what we technically have to ask for a .5 school psychologist and a .5 special education teacher. In reality, we're going to have one full-time school, school psychology specialist and one full-time special education teacher. Is that an accurate?
You're going to break it up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Makes sense to me. Any questions? Okay.
All right. With that, I'd request that we all approve the additional special education staff beginning with the 23, 24 school year.
And that's one position, correct?
It's only one FTE.
One, one FTE.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm making sure. All right. So we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Nope. Ryan's got it.
Motion by Ryan. You want a second then, John?
I'm a two.
John's a second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Up next, we have the purchase or renewal of school status. We started school status last year. It is how we text, email, call, all of our parents and everything. It's been very positive. It allows us to keep a record of, you know, phone conversations and everything. It's, it's been very beneficial for us. Ms. Feigs, I know at the high school, it's helped y'all out this hour.
Yeah.
I don't know if y'all will talk about it a little bit, but it's just been so good. The parent has a phone number that's specific to them that calls out to them and they can call in on and they know what's, who it is and everything. It's just.
Can you call or just text? You can call.
And email, yeah. And like we can see when the teachers have called or text or emailed. So like if we're dealing with a discipline issue, we can see in here, you know, what the teachers, what they text. So we know what parents are emailing.
I did not know you could call again.
These other parents are a lot nicer when they know you're recording the phone call.
Well, I think in the age of where we are with smartphones and everything, it's, it's how people communicate.
Yeah.
And it allows us to have a system that we can, we can operate in.
One thing that helped us a lot that day that the power went out, we could actually pull up the students and we could see their schedule. So when parents were coming to check out, we didn't have any system to be able to verify the adult or who the kid was or where they were going or like what class they were in. And with through school status, we were able to find them, verify the parent and then get them out safely.
Awesome. Okay.
So it's really helpful.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. With that, any other questions? Okay. With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that we remove our purchase of school status pro in the amount of $23,617.
All right. So we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Sarah. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Up next, we have Chromebook purchases. I know we purchased some either last month or the month before, but Chromebooks are what we do around here a lot. And I don't know if y'all can match Mr. Hand. He's back there in the yellow shirt. He's already technology director.
Welcome.
We're excited to have him. He has been moving back and, been moving on the weekends.
Okay. You got big shoes to fill from Kellen. I'm just telling you.
What we have here is the purchase of 430 Chromebooks, the licenses and everything. And Mr. Hand, please stop me if you need to. What we have is our K2 campus. They are mainly Apple products or iPads and everything. And we're starting to transition them to Chromebooks and they have the touchscreen on them. They'll have those same features and everything. But one of the things that's very important is to also have the keyboard for the child to start using and everything. So, you know, and also those Apple devices are starting to age a little bit. And it, and buying three grades at once is a little bit, but that's okay. We can afford it. And are we, we're not using.
We're using our S R.
We're using, we're finishing up our S R funds for this. And so out of the, out of COVID money. And so it's not out of our real operating to get the kids what they need. Mr. Hand, would you like to add anything?
Covered a lot of it. And the purchase is also to carts, charging carts.
Okay, the charging carts.
Previous carts they used for iPads are too small. Chromebooks won't fit. So we also plan to repurpose what iPads we can still use. There's a couple of years left. We'll still use maybe some of those classrooms.
Okay.
For like centers.
Okay.
There's, a lot of them still can be used.
Now, is, do we use technology in pre-K? Like the iPads or Chromebooks?
Yes, ma'am, but not to the degree that we do in kindergarten. They have access to devices and whatnot. We're not one of them.
We're not. Okay.
No way.
Okay.
Is this a bid, competitive bid based on?
We're on tips, taps.
They're what?
On tips, taps. It's cooperative purchasing. It's who, it's, it's, it's who we've been using and.
Are the Chromebooks easier to keep up with and replace and fix and repair than the Apple products?
Absolutely.
Okay. So it's an investment, but it's going to be something that we can repair ourselves for future use.
It's not even close.
Okay. I figured, but again.
Good to ask questions.
Asking questions for the general public who are watching the video. All right.
With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that we purchase Chromebooks from DCW in the amount of 168, $168,596.14.
All right. So we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Up next is curriculum purchase. Ms. Tabor is on vacation. I hope she's enjoying Colorado right now. But one of the things our, our intermediate school has, has been doing the Spade and Science curriculum for the past, for the past year. You know, science is, is starting to become a tested area and we are wanting to provide a guaranteed viable curriculum starting at that age. You know, we had, all of these resources have been viewed by our, via our teachers and instructional leaders and making to ensure that they align with, with standards. And we also let our teachers use, I believe, three different companies of curriculum. And our teachers were by far in favor of this and so were the students who received it.
And is this just going to be at the intermediate school?
Yes, ma'am. We are starting at intermediate for the 23, 24 school year. We will be vetting grades five through, I believe, end of course through biology for that curriculum as well. So we're kind of in the chump, but next year it will be five through biology.
Okay.
Right now we have Kessler Science, or 5A. And we were, we looked at Amplify to go ahead, but we decided to keep Kessler because we were happy and seeing good results with our standards and spending some more time next year to look at really how it transitions to middle school, engineer high, to make sure it's having more of the hands-on and some of the things to get them ready for biology and all those things.
So how is this, Ed, what did you call it? The?
Amplify.
Amplify. How is that going to feed in if she's using Kessler? Does it, does it?
Well, that's why we have to take a year with 5A to make sure that we do get a curriculum that feeds in. It may very well be that we can handle 5 for grades five through eight.
But for this next year, how is that going to feed in? It is the same standards?
Where it's the.
Oh, I see your question.
Sorry. I didn't ask it very well.
The NGSS standards is what third grade will teach for their grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, all the way up. We teach those standards.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it fed in and prepared them for.
And that, the major investment here is the hands-on material. When you look through the bids for kids, and that is so that the kids can have hands-on instruction. You know, part of their science curriculum is that they have at least 20% hands-on instruction, which it needs to be. And you know, that, that true concrete hands-on, you know.
Is this replacing STEM?
No.
No.
It aligns with STEM.
It aligns with STEM. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Couple questions. So this is S R.
Yes, sir. We still have, and Mr. Reddell can clean me up on this. We still have S R funds that are available. So we'll go ahead and use those for purchasing of the, of this next year. It may not be the same for the biology curriculum, but we can for the 3, 4.
Anymore?
You say a couple?
I know. You asked one. I was thrown off.
I can ask another one. So the ask is the 59 in the packet, not the 62 because we're doing the professional development ourselves?
Right. The 62, there's $3,200 in there. We are looking at partnering with one of our adjacent school districts to reduce that cost. That is, that is considered a micro purchase on the BD end. We'll use BD funds instead of S R funds to purchase that. And I would rather be able to drop the price down by sharing the district with that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Good questions, Ryan. You don't have any more? All right.
With that, I'd like to make the recommendation that we purchase grades 3, 4 science curriculum materials in the amount of $59,300, $59,300.39 from Amplify.
All right. So we have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Sarah. Do we have a second? I'll second. Second by Mindy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Okay. Up next, I believe, if I remember correctly, is Cornell.
All right. So did y'all take a look at this? Do we see any need for executive session?
I don't.
Ryan, Sarah? Okay.
I'd like to make the recommendation that we accept the resignations of Amy Taylor, Patrick Brown, Andrea Eagle, and Jessica Myers with regret.
Before we go on further and.
Yes, ma'am.
Do this. I'm just going to tell you, two of these people, so Coach Myers is a huge loss for our district.
Sure.
And so is Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown and the way, the passion he instilled in our students for art, he's got, he's leaving some big shoes to be filled there. So both of those guys absolutely with regret.